Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to today's forum. This is being presented by a joint effort between Miracosta College and the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, the Backpack Committee, which stands for Business and Community Political Action Committee. And one of their functions is to make sure that we have a much better chance of being aware of who the candidates are for the positions in our areas, so we can make wise decisions. As many of you know, when you are trying to, everybody who wants to vote and make the right decision, if you don't know the candidates, generally, the information with which we are provided has been carefully designed to fit in the 200-word-or-less category, and with or without a PR firm, it doesn't really tell us much about them. But the nice thing about meetings such as this, we get to ask them questions, and the questions have not been disclosed to them at all. Our candidates have no idea whatsoever we're going to ask them, and, of course, they don't look too nervous, but we expect they'll be able to answer them to the point where you'll be able to make a wise decision. So, we are very pleased to have this relationship with our wonderful community college, and not only that, we are so pleased to have with us the chair, the president of the Board of Trustees of the college, Dr. Francisco Rodriguez, and I'd like to invite him up here to make a couple of remarks about the voting, which we will be doing soon. Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. (applause)
Thank you. Actually, the chair of the Board of Trustees is here, and that's Gloria Carranza. Don't want to have that role. I am the superintendent-president of the college and Board of Trustees. This is where we meet. This is the John McDonald Room, and we're glad that so many of the League of Women Voters are here, our supporters, our members of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, our partners, members of the community who are here. We welcome you to the John McDonald Boardroom. And as I reflect on that picture that's back there, I'm reminded of the history of the college. We've been serving this region now for 78 years, since 1934, where we were Oceanside Carlsbad Junior College. Where 122 students enrolled. Today, as we complete our third week of instruction, over three campuses and online education, we serve about 18,000 students. So, a lot has changed since then. And it was in 1961 that the district asked the community to keep up with growth, with the demand that they anticipated through the post-War War II and post-GI Bill, and to build a campus that would serve this region for the future. So, it was in 1961 that the district asked its voters to support, back then, a $3.5 billion bond to build out the future. And in 1964, with those resources, they found this beautiful location, and then changed the name of the district to the Miracosta Community College District. 600 students enrolled in 1964, and Dr. McDonald was the founding president and served in that role until 1982. So, we are proud of that legacy, proud of the work of the previous boards of trustees that have positioned this college very well. We have seen an increase in enrollment of well over 20% over the last four years. Students are coming to Miracosta College and to other community colleges because of the excellent education, the affordability, the proximity clearly, and because, when they leave our institutions to the workplace or to the university setting, they do very, very well. I like to tell students, it's not as important as where you begin, but where you finish. So, more and more students are looking to their local community college, and we're very, very pleased to host this sort of event, have this sort of public forum. And this November, quite a bit is at stake, in terms of education, the leadership of our nation, obviously, and other very, very important races, this being one of them. So, we welcome all of you here. We hope that you have a comfortable stay while you're at the college. There are still some classes available. A handful, we're at 96% fill rate.
Wow.
96% fill rate in our census, which is today, at the college. So, there's a little bit of room, and we do have some late-starting classes, so we have students of all ages and interests who enroll with us. So, again, welcome. I want to say how much we enjoy the partnership with the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. As a member of the Board of Directors, you are always welcomed here, and our Board of Trustees, our students, our faculty, our administrators, our staff, welcome each and every one of you here. Thank you.
Thank you. Doctor, I wonder if you could answer a couple of questions for me as well?
Sure.
I realize you're not running for anything.
No.
But this will kind of give a warm-up to our candidates, but also, can you explain, please, the district situation that we're voting for and so forth?
Oh, sure, sure.
Thank you.
The California community colleges have 112 colleges within its constellation. Each of those colleges are governed within 72 community college districts. The Miracosta Community College District is one of 72 districts. Collectively, those 72 districts serve 2.4 million students, by far the largest higher education system in the world. Each of those districts are governed by locally-elected boards, typically five, seven, and in few cases, nine elected officials who govern the board. If you were to look on the other side of the room here, our district lines, if you will, run from the tip of Camp Pendleton through the city of Oceanside, through the city of Carlsbad, through Encinitas, Rancho Santa Fe, Solana Beach, Del Mar, to the tip of Sorrento Valley. So, that is our formal district lines. We have at-large elections, which means the entire community can vote for the seats that are available every two years. So, that's how our district is set up.
Thank you. And how many positions are open right now?
Four.
For this election?
There are three positions. Oh, four, excuse me. One, two.
Four candidates.
Four candidates, but the two ran unopposed, so...
So, we still make a choice on...
So, there are three seats. Pardon me.
That's great.
Let me be clear about this. Three seats, and two ran unopposed.
Great. Thank you very much, Doctor.
Welcome.
It's a privilege to be here. Thank you. Thank you, Doctor. Okay, so, today is going to be, we hope, very enlightening to you and entertaining at the same time. We have our candidates up in front, and in the past, we've always, we always try to be as fair as we can with respect to who sits where, and who is in the power chair, and who is in the not-so-power chair, and so forth. And what we decided to do, to make it easy for you, is to line up the candidates and the positions in which you will see them on the ballot, so you can get used to seeing them in that position. And, of course, up at the front, we have Jackie Simon, and I'm going from left to right. We have George McNeil. We have Frank Marshat and Leon Page. And we are going to ask some of those individuals the same questions, and then we're going to ask individual questions of each individual, that only they will answer, and so forth. And we'll try to rotate a little bit, but we want you to be well-informed, and we want your participation as well. So, all of you, I hope, have been given what looks like an enlarged postcard, red on one side, green on another. Does anybody not have one of these in the audience? Okay, we need one in the center, and a couple in the back, please, and then our candidates should each have them as well. And this is called a red-green indicator. And the reason we have done this in the past is because when we have candidates answer a question, which is a yes or no question, yes, no, or positive-negative, something of that nature, and we want them all to ask, answer it at the same time, since the question will be asked, and then I will say, "Please show us your answer." When I raise up my paddle, ignore my colors, because I'm colorblind, anyway, you raise yours up at that time and keep it raised. And then, when you put them down, I'm going to ask the audience what their opinion is of the question as well. And we found this to be quite enlightening to the candidates often, because they think they know what the majority of the candidates will feel on a particular position, and they become enlightened, the larger the crowd is. They may be convinced that, hey, they're right on, or gee, maybe they need to rethink their position, and so forth. So, we have one question of that type, and we're going to start with that question right now. So, this question, all of you will be answering the question at the same time, but please do not give away your answer until I put my hand up, and that way, everyone will have a chance to give us their answer without any undue influence on the person to their left or right. So, the first question is, "Do you support the Miracosta bond as it appears on the ballot?" I'll read it again. Do you support the Miracosta bond as it appears on the ballot? Raise your ballots, please.
Green is yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, just to compare this, I'm going to ask the folks that are in the audience right here, raise your paddles as well, and have your proper answer, the one facing the candidates. In other words, if you say yes, have green facing that way. If you say no, do that. None of this undecided, okay? Just do it either way. Do you support the Miracosta bond as it appears on the ballot? Look at that. Now, it's interesting, because we don't have only one color in the audience, and it kind of gives you an idea of the concerns that some have. Thank you very much for participating in that. Now, I'm going to start with Frank Marshat. You indicated that you do. Please tell us why you support this. You have 90 seconds, and, excuse me, I didn't mention, we have our timer general here, who is going to give a signal at what point?
We'll give a signal when you have 30 seconds remaining.
Okay. Do you have a color?
No.
Okay. This will be 30 seconds.
Could you say 30 seconds?
When you have 30 seconds remaining, he's going to hold this up. That means you've spoken for 60, you've got 30 to go. When your time is up, this, and if you don't get off, she's got a hook. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you. So, why do you say yes, that you do support the Miracosta bond as it appears on the ballot?
I support it for a number of reasons, but some of the most important are that currently 75% of classes are wait-listed at the college, and the nursing program is three-years, has a three-year waiting list, and the chemistry labs have a two-year waiting list. And 24% of the bond is going to go toward those new classrooms to help that, those classes that are impacted most. The other reason is, is that across the board, the university has had 50 years with this campus, it needs to upgrade the rest of its facilities. So, it has the need, it's the right time, and I believe, although the taxpayers are in difficult straits, they can see the power of education and what it does to create jobs in the community.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next question, and we are going to ask you to answer this question, and you will each have a minute and a half to answer it, so you don't want to answer this question in unison, like you did the last one. And Jackie, I'm going to start with you. If Proposition 30 or 38 do not pass, and you have to eliminate a program, which program would be the first you would cut? I'll repeat the question, and you'll have 90 seconds to answer the question. Jackie, if Proposition 30 or 38 do not pass, and you have to eliminate a program, which program would be the first you would cut? Jackie?
Well, let me start by saying that our community college is a basic aid community college district, and neither one of these propositions affect us, however, they deeply affect our neighboring colleges. And I could not speak on their behalf, but I don't think they'd want to cut any of their programs. And because we're basic aid, and we depend on property taxes to fund the college, I believe we will not have to cut any of these programs. We may have to fund them a bit more if neither one of the propositions passes.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask George McNeil to respond to the same question, and I'll repeat the question once more, please. If Proposition 30 or 38 do not pass, and you have to eliminate a program, which program would be the first you would cut?
Well, you're putting us in a box and saying that we have to eliminate a program. The difficulty we have is, we are being recommended to, by the state, to maintain all of the courses that we have that will result in a certificate, because they are courses in which the students can gain employment right after graduation. We're also asked to maintain all of our courses that have an AA degree. Again, those students can get employment right after graduation. We're asked to maintain all of our courses that are transfer courses, because they enable students to go to a four-year college. Eliminating all of those, there's only one group of courses left, and that is the courses that we offer our community, for the most part, free of charge. We have cut back on some of those courses during the financial recession, and that's the area that we'd have to look at. We'd have to look at the courses that are duplicated by the YMCA, duplicated by local community groups, and duplicated by local community centers. That's about the only area that I would even look at. My hope is that we do not cut anything, and since we had a budget meeting two days ago and have a very, very, very slight surplus, I don't think we're going to cut anything at all.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Frank, you get an opportunity to answer the same question, and I'll repeat the question for you. If Proposition 30 or 38 do not pass, and you have to eliminate a program, which program would be the first you would cut?
Yeah, I think the point is well-spoken, that as a community college, we only have 2.4% of the budget money that comes from the state of California. So, if we...
The mic? The mic?
Uh, thank you. We only have about 2.4% of the budget, which would be $2,400,000. If that were the case, and we had to cut something to answer the question specifically, I think George has got the right answer, that it would be those classes that we look at across the community that are duplicated in other areas. But I think, more than anything specifically, rather than looking at what's going to happen if 30 and 38 don't pass relative to how much our budget would be cut, I think what will happen is, we're going to get more students, because the remaining community colleges around here will not have the budget, because they're not funded the way we are. So, we have to plan for that.
Great. Thank you very much. And Leon, you have the opportunity to answer this question. The question again is, if Proposition 30 or 38 do not pass, and you have to eliminate a program, which program would be the first you would cut?
Again, I would associate my position with that expressed by, in fact, Trustee Simon and Trustee McNeil. This is a basic aid district, and this is, and that's a wonderful aspect of this community college. It's one reason I am so proud of this community college. When we say basic aid, it means that it's not primarily dependent on revenues from Sacramento. It is primarily dependent on the local property taxes that we all pay as property owners. And so, as a result, we're not as dependent as, for example, the Palomar College District or other college districts on what Sacramento chooses to give us from one year to the next. We have a budget of around $96 million. We have a reserve of about $10 million. As far as I could tell, the projections are mildly positive for the next fiscal year. I just don't see the circumstance happening that you're describing. I don't see this college being affected if those propositions should fail. What I think, however, we should always strive to do is to deliver services more efficiently. And in that respect, this is a very, very exciting time in higher education. At other institutions, they're looking at ways in which to deliver services, provide education in a much more efficient way, and I really think community colleges are the key to providing young people and returning workers an opportunity for retraining at much, much less cost. So, I think what we should do instead is look to see if we can deliver the same services in a more efficient manner.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, Jackie, we're going back to you now, because earlier, you indicated if you would support the Miracosta bond, and you said you would. Why would you do that?
There's several reasons. First, this college has not asked for a bond since its inception in about 50 years. You do, all you have to do is walk around our campus, we have three campuses. You can walk around the Community Learning Center, you can walk around this area, this campus, and you can walk around San Halio. It, you know, our gardens look great, but the buildings themselves are old, they're outdated. We can't, we're not offering the high technology that we should be able to offer because of the way the classrooms are. They're inefficient. Our science labs are very, very inefficient. We have students waiting to get in these classes for a long time. There's many, many reasons, but primarily, we need to have an efficient operating campus to allow us to teach more students, because we are going to be teaching more, because our neighbors are capped by what they can do with the state funding. And we are able to offer and educate more students. We need to have our college be what's called a vanguard and premier college, that it is, always been considered, and the bond will enhance and make it happen.
Thank you very much. This next question is, we're going to start with George, and we will ask each of the candidates to respond to this question in turn. George, and in 90 seconds or less, if the Miracosta College bond passes, what is your plan for maintaining the newly-constructed or upgraded facilities?
We've been studying the possibility of expanding our facilities for over two years. We have a document that runs between 700 and 800 pages of various things that we will do if we have a bond that passes and if we can then build facilities. What will we do? We will keep them pristine, we will keep them full of students, we will keep education rolling in every possible way, and we will be a vanguard institution for this area.
Thank you very much. Leon, if the Miracosta College bond passes, what is your plan for maintaining the newly-constructed or upgraded facilities?
I think that's just a question of budgeting, and we have to be careful in how we budget in order to set aside an appropriate amount of money for maintenance and make sure that we are keeping up with deferred maintenance. So, it's simply a matter of making sure that the money that we spend is spent appropriately and carefully, and that it is not wasted. It just has to be carefully set aside in our annual budget from year to year.
Great. Thank you. Jackie, if the Miracosta College bond passes, what is your plan for maintaining the newly-constructed or upgraded facilities?
Well, I think it goes to two of my candidates who have just spoken. I support what Trustee McNeil says, as well as elect a board member to be Leon Page. I think in maintaining the facilities, we do have to be very, very careful with how we budget, which we've been able to do in the past three years. We've actually saved over $14 million in expenditures. So, I think we know how to do that very well, but I think we have to be even more frugal and more careful so that we can expand, so we can grow in a manner that's concise, precise, and that we also reflect the time of what students need. Not everybody is going to be able to or want to transfer to four-year colleges. We have many returning veterans who we need to retrain, and many of them will want a new career, and they only want to spend two years in a college, and we need to look at how we can expand that area of career, technical, and education. We're currently losing one of our best programs, the Santa Nofree Program is shutting down. And that was a big program and a big partnership, so we have to maintain and look where we can also do partnerships, and I will do everything in my power to support those efforts.
Thank you very much. George McNeil, we have a question for you. Earlier, when we did the red-green question, and everybody said green, everybody said yes on the panel, the question was, we asked you if you support the Miracosta bond, and you said yes. Why do you support it?
I'll give you 653 reasons. Right now, this semester, at Miracosta, there are 653 students who would like to take a lab-science course, and they can't get in. It's mind-boggling. Our nursing program has, depending upon which program you want to go into, has either a two- or a three-year waiting list. I'm getting older every year. I want those nurses out there. (laughing) We have a superior nursing program, but we simply can't fit anymore in there. Take a visit. Watch the instructor, have a model on the table there, and try to show the students. The students are standing side by side, because we can't fit any more people in the room. Why do we need a bond issue? Because we are absolutely packed, and in those areas, there is no more room to go. We teach in those areas on Fridays. We teach in those areas on the weekends. We have no more room. So, why do we need a bond issue? To serve the students and the community of this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, we have four more questions. We're going to ask each of the candidates one of the questions, and each candidate gets a different question, which was customized by students and faculty and citizenry, and so, the question we ask one candidate, you will not glean anything from that with respect to the question you may receive for yourself. So, Jackie, we're going to...
Just for a moment. I thought everybody was going to get a chance to answer the question on construction. Do I get that later?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, what we're going to do, we're going to start with Jackie, and this is a 90-second question. It says, "In your ballot statement, you say you want to expand programs allowing more students to transfer to four-year institutions. What will you do, and how will you pay for it?"
That's an excellent question. I, as one board member, cannot do anything but working in conjunction with my other board members, as well as our superintendent-president and the experts at this college, who are our deans and our vice presidents, I'm sure there is creative ways of looking at what program. There's such a thing called program review, and every year, we look at programs that are working, programs that could be expanded, and programs that could be replaced. And I support all of that. I personally don't go into the classrooms and change anything, however, I trust my experts to bring me the information so that I, as one of seven board members, together we can make the right decision.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, Frank. Frank Marshat, we have a question for you. 90 seconds, please. Tell us, in your ballot statement, you talked about your business experience. Tell us about your business, and how does that relate to guiding the government of a local community college?
That's a great question, and one of the founding reasons why I'm running for the trusteeship. And when you look at the $497 million that this organization expects to spend over the next 10 years in construction, and you look at the board's current makeup, nobody has any experience in letting these types of contracts. And over the last 11 years, I've built a business that has a tremendous track record in being able to bring projects in on time and under budget. So, I think, from that perspective, I can save the community tens of millions of dollars in helping the administration work through the process and do it in the most effective and efficient way possible. The other thing, in terms of my business experience, I think that is very helpful, is my financial expertise. I graduated with a degree in finance, and I have worked in commodities, so I understand the bond process, and I think that will be a very expensive process. And for other institutions around this city, it has been extremely expensive not to have somebody who's knowledgeable on the board. And then, lastly, I think, when you look at things like that Trustee Simon said, she said they saved $14 million. I don't know about creative accounting, but the budget has not gone down by $14 million. The budget has stayed flat for the last three years. So, where does that $14 million in savings come from?
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, George McNeil, we have a question for you. Why do you want to continue to serve on the Miracosta Board of, Miracosta College Board of Trustees?
Because this is the best college around. I enjoy it immensely here. I feel that I contribute to the board. My background is in 37 years in education. I know education inside and out. I have a feel for the people who work here, and I have a feel for the students who are here. I go to many, many student events. I understand what the students' frustrations are. I understand what the students' desires are. And in some cases, we're not meeting them, and I want to work on meeting the students' wishes. I want the students to be able to come here, get the courses that they need in order to graduate, and get them on time. And I think that that's the work that we have to do. And I think that that's the work that we have to do. We've been in a downturn. We've had a thirty percent increase in student body around here, and we have a decrease in income. We really have had a problem the last three years. We're coming out of that. Now is the time. Now is the time to service students because we're going to now have the ability to do so, and we're going to be critical decisions that are going to have to be made in the next few years. I'm hoping very, very strongly that the bond issue passes, and if it does, Miracosta is going to really open up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Page, as a layperson, I need to ask you this question. You are currently suing the Miracosta College Board of Trustees. Now that you're going to join their ranks, tell us about that.
That's not accurate. I did in 2007 file a public interest lawsuit. That lawsuit challenged the one point six million dollar giveaway that was transferred to the former superintendent president in order to buy out her contract. I was horrified. I was outraged by that expenditure of public money. As a labor lawyer for the county of Orange, I knew it was illegal. I filed a lawsuit to challenge that, to restore to the college that money. After a four-year legal battle, that lawsuit was successful, and I obtained a judgment on behalf of the taxpayers that required former superintendent president Victoria Rishart to return to the college every penny that she had received under that illegal agreement. After succeeding after winning the lawsuit, I then executed an agreement with Dr. Rodriguez whereby I transferred all of my rights to enforce that judgment to the college, and the college now is responsible for collections.
Thank you. Okay, Frank, earlier, we asked a question of the others, and what the question was, if the Miracosta College bond passes, what is your plan for maintaining the newly constructed or upgraded facilities?
I think I had a pretty nice opportunity to answer that earlier, but I'll kind of rephrase a little. My business currently is in the maintenance, the purchase and maintenance of industrial space, so I have firsthand experience in both letting these types of contracts, understanding what they take to maintain them over time, dollars per square foot, all the way down to letting every type of contract that you can imagine for fifty thousand-plus square feet. So I think I bring a tremendous amount of experience to the board that it can utilize in this process, and that will give it a helping hand in the years to come to be able to minimize the costs. I think the second thing that, in terms of the construction, that's very important is there's a number of different ways that the college can utilize contract-type labor to build these facilities, and having somebody on the board who has firsthand experience with those types of contracts like I do, and in the millions and millions of dollars, is very helpful. So I think those are the things that I would bring to the table that would be special and unique for the board.
Thank you very much. Leon Page.
Yes, sir.
Earlier, we asked you if you support the Miracosta bond, and you said yes. Why?
Community colleges are the engines of local economic growth, and this community relies on this college to provide young people and returning workers with the kind of training that will enable them to find jobs and remain in this community. Now, I am a big supporter, big fan of online education. In fact, I've taken a few online classes here at Miracosta myself, and I would encourage the public as well. You can sign up with your own computer. You can do it from home. It's wonderful. Expand your mind, expand your horizons. But there are some things that you cannot do through online education. As efficient, as effective, as inexpensive as it is, you can't mix chemicals online, right? You can't do a biological dissection online. There are some things that have to be done in the classroom, and so for those things, that laboratory work that cannot be done online, we need facilities here on camps to provide opportunities for those students, for those young people, and also those returning workers.
Thank you very much. Okay, this next question, each of you will get an individual question again, and ninety seconds as well. Mr. McNeil, how do you see Miracosta College serving the diverse needs of our community?
You know, Dr. Rodriguez, our superintendent, has a phrase. We have a very, very tight admissions policy. We only admit a hundred percent of the graduating class. We are diversified. We are diversified upon every possible level, not only with ethnicity. From a personal note, my wife, whose age I won't tell you, but you can guess, and she's about my age, took four tap dancing classes. Everybody in the tap dancing class was about the age of her grandchildren. She got on just fine. We graduate people at every age level. Our average age here is in the mid twenties. It's not eighteen or nineteen. It's in the mid twenties. We have an extremely diversified student body, and the reason why we do is based on what Dr. Rodriguez says. We admit a hundred percent of the graduating class. Now, when they come here, if they want to take English or math, as they almost all do, they have to take a test, and we may have them take some review work, but we will still admit them. And that's why we have an extremely diversified student body here, and I'm very proud of that fact.
Thank you. Okay, our next section has a question for Mr. Page. Leon, some people perceive that you have an acrimonious history with Miracosta College. Why are you now seeking to join the Board of Trustees?
To the contrary, it was through the lawsuit. Again, I brought the lawsuit on behalf of the public, on behalf really of the college. It was brought in order to recover the money that was given away back to the college. Now, I couldn't have done that lawsuit. I would not have had the perseverance had I not, through that process, received the tremendous support, not only from current employees, current instructors, current faculty members of the college, but also members of the community, members of the board itself. It wasn't just me. I was the plaintiff in the case, and it is true that I did a lot of work on the case, but I could not have done it had I not enjoyed the tremendous support and cooperation and assistance from people within the college community. Taking on a public institution, a hundred-million-dollar institution with practically unlimited legal funds, it's a difficult challenge for an individual to do, but I was able to do it, again, because of the support that I received from people within the college. So one of the reasons, in fact, I wanted to join now the Board of Trustees is because I made so many friends in this process. I met some truly wonderful people, and I don't want those relationships to end. Through that process, through that litigation, I learned what a wonderful college Miracosta is and what a terrific college it can be if we take care of it.
Thank you very much. Okay, Jackie. Jackie Simon, I have a question for you. In your ballot statement, you state that you want to, quote, "promote the growth of student success of returning veterans," unquote. How will you do that? Why is this an issue for you now and not in the past?
On the contrary, my issue has always been students, period, whether they're returning veterans, whether they're our folks, you know, retirees in the community. I'm a community college instructor. I have, I am the only community college educator on this board. I have been taught at very, not at this college because it would be a conflict of interest, but I have thirty-two years of teaching, and I'm for all students, and I want us to create and make room for veterans because we can, because it's in the best interest of the college to expand its outlook, and because the veterans need us. We're next to Camp Pendleton. It's a no-brainer, really, when you think about it. It's a very important thing to do, and we can do it. If you recall, earlier, I said we're a basic aid district. We don't rely on the state. We're not capped by how many students that we get, and through our frugal prudence, we're able to do probably more than our neighbors, and our neighbors are going to need our help, as they have in the past, because they can't possibly educate and take in all of those students. And it goes to George's answer as well. The diversity of our college is immense, and I would include the veterans as well.
Thank you very much. This next question is for Frank Murchat. How do you see your role as trustee? Discuss management versus governing.
I think that's a very, very good question, and it's something that, when you look at the Board of Trustees, they should be looking out three, five, ten, and fifteen years. What I see, I've attended meetings, by the way, you can attend meetings online. You can actually just either catch them data streaming, or they tape them, and you can listen to them later. I've attended probably about ninety-five percent of the meetings over the last six months. They spend a great deal of their time looking backwards, and what needs to happen is the board needs to be pushing the administration, as the administration has been doing an excellent job of looking forward. The board really has to join that effort and move that process forward. So I think what I would bring to the board is years of professional experience. I worked for IBM for twelve years. I've worked for other very large institutions. And when you look at the board now, what it needs to do is focus on how this place is going to integrate online education. How is it going to move forward? How is it going to serve the community ten years out, rather than looking backwards?
Thank you very much. I have another question, which I'm going to ask the same question of each of the four candidates, and I'd like to start with you, Leon. What single issue do you want to see the Board of Trustees address, and how will you accomplish this?
I think the most important role of a trustee, right? We are trustees of a trust, of a public trust. It's a public trust that is, that has an annual budget year to year of almost a hundred million dollars. We owe essentially a fiduciary duty to the public to make sure that that money is appropriately spent. So the first and foremost obligation as a trustee is to ensure that that money is spent in the most effective, most efficient way possible. So the number-one issue is oversight, is to ensure accountability and to make sure that that money is spent appropriately. One of the things I would like to do, one of the things, some of the experiences I bring to this position is I'm a lawyer for the Board of Supervisors in Orange County, and so I am very familiar with public agencies, and I now know how local agencies should operate. One of the things that I think this board, this college, this district should look at is an independent-type fraud hotline. We're going to be spending, if the bond measure passes, close to five hundred million dollars, and if there are improprieties, if there are abuses, that needs to come to the board's attention so that we can then conduct oversight and remedy those problems, remedy those abuses. So what I propose to do is to have an independent channel, perhaps one of our current administrators who can be the recipient of these sort of anonymous-type complaints that might bubble up from time to time, so that we, as the public's representatives, can exercise oversight and can make sure that the public's money is always spent appropriately and legally, and that's why I'm running. That's what I promise to do.
Thank you. George, I'm going to ask you the same question, George McNeil. What single issue do you want to see the Board of Trustees address, and how will you accomplish this?
Student success. We must have students be successful. If students come to school here, they have to know that when they enter a class, if they do the work, and they're able to understand the material, that they will be successful. Our success rate is not great. One of the reasons why, of course, as mentioned before, we accept a hundred percent, but that's not the only reason. We need to spend more money on counseling. We need to spend more money on student assistance, particularly with our veterans, particularly with some of our younger students who were not successful in school and barely graduated. We have to, it's, we cannot expect all of our students to simply walk in a classroom, pick up a book, and be successful. It doesn't work that way at a community college. How do we do it? Unfortunately, we've got to spend more money. We've got to spend more money on counseling. We've got to spend more money on student tutoring. We've got to spend more money on student aides. We have to have a better support system. We have a fabulous faculty. We have a fabulous course of studies. We do not have a fabulous support system. We need help in that area. And actually, Dr. Rodriguez gave us on Tuesday his goals for next year, and the first goal on that list was student success. So we have the, we have the attention of our superintendent president, and I'm sure we'll succeed.
Thank you very much. Jackie Simon, I'd like to ask you the question, same question, please. What single issue do you want to see the Board of Trustees address, and how will you accomplish this?
One of the issues that we already address is open access, but I want to see it continue in a manner that supports students who come here who either want to transfer to four-year colleges or they want careers. And in doing that, of course, it's going to cost more money to do this, but we need to develop programs that are in partnership with people in our community. We do have some of those programs. We have a hybrid technology program that's very successful. Biotech, we've got a great nursing program, and as trustee McNeil has noted, a great faculty. We just need to increase those kinds of things, and we need to be in the twenty-first century and be at the pulse of what students need. Again, not all students will want to or can transfer to four-year colleges. In this economic times, most of us are considering, how are we going to keep afloat? How are we going to be monetarily successful? And we need to address that issue as well.
Thank you very much. Frank, I know you know the question by now, but I'm going to repeat it again once more.
Thank you.
What single issue do you want to see the Board of Trustees address, and how will you accomplish this?
I think George put it best in terms of student success, but I'd like to pinpoint one specific area in there that he mentioned just ever so briefly, which was veterans. All of us owe a tremendous debt to these folks, and we need to do everything we possibly can. As a member of the foundation board for the last two years, and as the chairperson for the development committee, we raised three hundred thousand dollars for veterans so that we could add some of that counseling support that George mentioned. We still have a need for two additional counselors. I believe one of the first things I can do is to focus on the budget and how we can find room for two additional counselors, and that is a very specific need and a need that we need to jump on right now. So that's what I'd do.
Thank you very much. I have one more question, and it's, this really will be a thirty-second question, not ninety-second. And Jackie, I'm going to start with you. What single issue, what single question do you wish we had asked you?
Why I want to continue on the board.
And what would you have said?
Several reasons. Let me start with one. I am the senior-most trustee. We are losing trustee Carranza. She is retiring. Why I want to continue not only being the senior trustee, but I, again, let me reemphasize, I am the only community college instructor, and I have that full background. I understand it inside and out. I understand the board's history. I understand how the board operates. I know what it means, a code of ethics. I know what it means, a closed session. I understand and respect the process, and I want to continue working with the board and moving forward. I am seeking my third term. I still haven't completed everything I started.
Thank you very much. George, what single question do you wish we had asked you?
Do you support Dr. Rodriguez?
And would you like to say the answer to that since he's in the room?
I do support Dr. Rodriguez. I don't think the whole board, as it currently is constituted, supports Dr. Rodriguez, and I find him to be an exemplary leader, someone who has taken this college in the last four years to- last four years to tremendous heights. He's highly respected in the community and I wish you had asked me, do I support Dr. Rodriguez? The answer would of course be yes.
Great. And you had an opportunity to do that for yourself.
Thank you very much.
So we want to make sure everyone's happy. Frank, would you care to tell us which question you wished we had asked you?
I think that from my perspective, there's a couple of things that have been said here by some of the other panel members that I would question. And I guess the question I would have liked to have been asked is, what have you heard today that you either think is not right or isn't specific to what we're going to make judgments on here? And I would lead a couple of items in that area. One, Jackie Simon talked about how frugal the college has been. Currently, the college pays its professional staff approximately 20% better than any community college in California. She's represented the board during that period of time in which the growth in those wages has been outstanding. Leon, he hasn't been on the board. I'm not sure how many meetings he's gone to, but he talked about oversight of the bond. The bond comes with an automatic oversight committee. There isn't some special thing that we need to do to make sure that there isn't waste, fraud, and abuse in that bond. Those are public people, independent of the college, that has already put in that process. So I would think those are very important pieces.
Great.
And I'm getting the card.
Yeah, two of them, as a matter of fact. Thank you very much. Okay, Leon, would you like to share with us a question which you wish that we had asked you?
First, let me just respond to what was just said. I mean, yes, we do have a citizens oversight committee as part of the bond, but that is no reason for this board to not do its oversight and not watch how the money is spent. We can't delegate our most fundamental obligation to some other people, some other group who's not even elected. That's bizarre. What I wish you'd ask me about is my background, my experience. What led me to be in this position today to serve on the Board of Trustees?
Okay, I think you have about 10 seconds left. Do you want to summarize anything?
I am a graduate of UC Santa Barbara. I then moved to Sacramento where I worked for several years in the State Assembly, where I handled legislation for a member of the State Assembly who represented the Santa Barbara area. While I worked in the State Assembly, I went to law school at night. I went to McGeorge School of Law. While I was in McGeorge, I developed an interest in labor and employment law and I practiced that in a private firm for a few years. My wife and I then decided to move down to North San Diego County in 2003 where I started working for the county of Orange, where I practiced primarily labor and employment law. After the lawsuit was concluded, I actually joined Miracosta College as a member of its associate faculty and I taught business law, Business 140, to the students here and had a wonderful experience. So I actually got to see this college, not only from the perspective of a student, but also as an instructor. And now with that teaching experience, with the legal experience and my work at the county of Orange, I think I can make a positive contribution at this college.
Thank you very much. Well, I want to thank you very much for participating in this program. It's interesting when you have no idea what the questioner is going to ask and quite frankly, I didn't either until I saw them. And the audience had no idea, but we were all striving to make sure that we had an opportunity to know a little bit more about each of you and perhaps some of the questions would give us an idea of what we can expect when some of the issues come up. What do you think? Did we get some great answers there?